Hafadein, welcome everyone. This is the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. It's now called to order. Today's Friday, July 26, and the time is about 11:05 a.m. And we're here today. Public notice was given pursuant to the open government law in the Guam Daily Post and posted on the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Thursday, July 18, and Wednesday, July 2024. And notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. I'm here today with my colleagues, Senator Chris Barnett and Senator Roy Canata. Sijus Masie colleagues. I believe Senator Joanne Brown's also here. And I just want to ask all those who are going to testify today to just please state your name for the record so we know who's testifying. We're going to transcribe these proceedings. We're here today. Our agenda item is two reappointments. The reappointment of Angela M. Camacho to serve as a member for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission for a term of four years. And the reappointment of Luisa M. Westling to serve as a member for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission for a term of four years. The Guam Ancestral Lands Commission controls lands that have been returned by the military and either returns this to ancestral landowners, who they control the determination of and the distribution. And they also control crown lands that have been returned by the federal government and use those for investment purposes. So their duties are actually to compensate those landowners whose properties were returned by the federal government, but not returned to the original landowners by the government of Guam because the government of Guam wanted to keep those properties and use them. Some examples are the airport, right? So there are Tizen property owners who are owed compensation and others. And that's what they use their crown lands for is investment properties so that they can receive revenue and complete their mandate. All right, so we're going to hear now from the two nominees. And anyone else who wants to testify on those nominees, you can have a seat at this table, All right, so we have with us today, we're honored to have with us the Chair of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, Mr. Ron Eclavea. You'd like to present testimony?
Oh, yes. Yes, Buenas again, Madam Speaker and Senators. I'm Ron Eclavea, the Chairman of the Ancestral Lands Commission. I'm here to fully support the confirmation, reconfirmation of Angie Camacho and Luisa Westling, Luisa Westling. They've been very, very instrumental in their time with the ancestral lands. Their expertise with land, finance, real estate is off the charts. That's just my off-the-cuff remark. I urge you to confirm and support their reconfirmation to the Ancestral Lands Commission. And I look forward to working with them very closely again in the critical issues that we have coming up. And that's what I have to say. Sijus Masie, thank you.
Sijus Masie, Mr. Chair, Mr. Eclavea. We also have another member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, Mr. Ron Leguany.
Hafadein manelu. Si Ronald Leguanyzu, Gau se si gundu gehelu lokigi komision. Prewa zani gehelu usupotti si Luisa Westling zan si Angie Camacho sa mana zududa ni ni pudestitano se lo. Ta nisisi ta zudunia za husen supotti sti dos. Benakarada zana lula gaba biya naoki loa husen supotti sti dos zana udisesiana hamzuloki supotti. Stas? Sijus Masie.
Sijus Masie, Senator Leguany. Ms. Cruz, Mrs. Cruz? I mean, sorry, Blas, Mrs. Blas.
Hafadein, I'm Catherine Blas, the Acting Executive Manager, Director of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. And I'm here to support the nomination of Ms. Angela Camacho and Ms. Luisa Westling to continue their tenure with the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission Board. Working with them the last couple of years, I would have to say that they are not only responsible, but they're dedicated members. And they, their dedication to the board and to the people of Guam is exemplary. And we are in complete support. Thank you.
Sijus Masie, Ms. Blas, you're the Acting Executive Director right now. Thank you for that. All right, and we also have another commission member. If you could, Orleano, right, Mrs. Orle? Please, you may proceed.
Good morning. I'm Annie Orleano, and I'm one of the board members of the GLC. And I'm here today in support of Ms. Angela and Luisa. They're both a very, very important asset to GLC. So with your confirmation today, I believe that we'll go forward and do more work. And my most important job, I think, is to return those lands back to the original landowners. It's a long, long-awaited time, so I'm here to support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of you who are serving on the commission currently. I know that there's a lot of work and that you've been doing, many of you have been doing this for many years, so thank you. I don't have it in front of me, but I think one of the conditions of being a commission member is that you also are part of a family who had ancestral lands that was taken by the federal government. Is that correct? All right. And so, thank you for trying to bring justice to these, to your families and the other landowners. All right, so I'm also joined by Senator Teletitigui today. So I already introduced all the senators, Senator Joanne Brown, the Vice Chair, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Roy Canata, Sijus Masie. We'll now hear from the nominees themselves. So, Ms. Westling?
Thank you. You do. Buenas hafadei. Speaker Therese Terlahi, Chairwoman of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and Honorable Committee Members. My name is Luisa Maria Flores Westling. In 2015, I began my initial tenure as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. And today, I ask for your support for reappointment to continue to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. I am humbled by my colleagues. Wow, they are outstanding people, and they have taught me so much. And the people of Guam are truly blessed to have them overseeing this commission. And I can, with great hopes, look forward to continue working with them. My background, since 1984, I have been a full-time licensed and active real estate salesperson and broker professional with BHI Realty and also a Realtor with the Guam Association of Realtors. With the Guam Association of Realtors, I have served as President, Vice President, Secretary, and various committee chairpersons. It is my desire and hopes to continue to share my experience and knowledge of real estate matters with the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission as the commission carries out its duties, responsibilities, and mission. During my term with the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, I have had the extreme pleasure and honor of participating in the returning of lands to ancestral landowners and their families. That has always been such a high point of serving on this commission, to see people realize and regain what was wrongfully taken from them so many years ago. I've also had the pleasure of seeing the establishment of easements and rights of ways within returned lands for ingress and egress to allow property owners to access their properties. I have been involved in the management of the assets of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission and looking for ways to further put to use the land assets of the commission for the current and future benefit of dispossessed landowners. As a daughter of Angelo Antolon Flores and Nori J. Flores and a granddaughter of Vicente Munia Flores and Ana Blas Antolon Flores, our families were once dispossessed ancestral landowners. But through the fine works and efforts of this commission, properties have been returned to my family. While there are still a few pieces that are still being held, we are no longer completely dispossessed landowners. It is my hope and desire as a member of this great commission to continue the fine work and efforts to return lands back to the descendants of the ancestral owners and not to forget those who remain dispossessed. Sijus Masie for your time today and for this opportunity to appear before you and for considering my reappointment to the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Thank you.
Sijus Masie, Mrs. Westling. Ms. Camacho?
Buenas hafadei. Honorable Speaker Therese Terlahi, Senator Teletitigui, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Chris Barnett, and Senator Roy Canata. My name is Angela Camacho, and I'm here today to provide testimony on my reappointment to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. In 2019, I sat before you and asked for your support in my appointment for the same position that I sit before you today, asking this body to consider me again to serve as a GLC, G A L C, board member. I've been the Guam Housing Manager, I've been the Housing Manager for Guam Housing Corporation for the last five years, a position which I dedicate much of my time and energy. GHC has been supportive and allows me to attend GLC board meetings, committee meetings, and important events. I have maintained my license as a Realtor with Today's Realty, a profession I've enjoyed for over 21 years, although I have not been actively practicing due to time constraints. During my term as a Commissioner for GLC, an investment committee was created with the assistance and guidance of Guam Economic Development Authority through an MOU. I serve on this committee with Commissioner Maria Cruz. An investment policy statement was adopted by GLC Board to manage, monitor, evaluate, and set guidelines in investing fund assets. As I shared with this body in 2019, I am a dispossessed ancestral landowner descendant. I'm the daughter of the late Jose Leon Guero Camacho and Agnes Menibuzen Camacho and the granddaughter of the late Enrique Martinez Camacho, married to the late Emateria Baza Leon Guero Camacho, who was a dispossessed ancestral landowner of Lot 5172 to Maning Guam. Sijus Masie for your time in allowing me to appear before you and to ask for your consideration in my appointment.
Sijus Masie, Ms. Camacho. All right, I'm going to ask both of you some questions if I think that will, I'm going to allow the senators as well to just ask both of you at the same time if that's okay or separately also. But first of all, so Ms. Westling, you said you had served for, since 2015, nine years now on this commission?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, and Angela, how long have you served?
About five years now, since 2019.
And, all right, so we've received these referrals, both of them, same time, June 25, 2024. And it looks like, yes, so it's a reappointment, but your previous confirmation had expired in 2023, Ms. Camacho, right? So it, well, according to this, expired August 2023. And for Ms. Westling, also August 2023?
That is correct.
All right, so have you been serving on the board since August 2023 till now?
There isn't, I believe there's a six-month period or a time period.
There's a 90-day plus three legislative days, yes.
So we did sit in board meetings during that time, but after that, only attended and did not vote or participate in any discussion.
Okay, thank you. And same thing for you?
That is correct, yes.
All right, and currently, well, at least recently, when I checked, they were doing meetings by Zoom since COVID? They resumed in-person meetings?
As of the last meeting that I attended, it was still via Zoom.
Yeah, is there, one of the board members, commissioners, had expressed to me a desire to return to in-person or at least do hybrid. So I'm just going to make that suggestion while the acting director's here. I think that's a complete, your call, or the board can decide to do hybrid or not. But, all right, I'm going to talk about now what some of the concerns of the Ancestral Lands Commission in my view are. And so both of you, I didn't even realize, are Realtors and also have other experience that you bring to the board. And this investment, the investment of the lands, right, for the benefit of the beneficiaries, do you believe that the ancestral lands is making the right choices in its investment and that it is thoroughly vetting ways to get the best value for these properties? I'm going to ask Ms. Westling first.
There are always challenges in determining highest and best use of properties. And I believe the commission has done a pretty thorough job in vetting different properties that become available for either RFP or even to the point of the commission looking at developing properties themselves because the law does allow for us to do that. We have hired the Guam Economic Development Authority, GIDA, to be property managers and to advise the commission, the board, on matters of market value and feasibility studies. And so I think the commission comes to the table well-informed with what they can do and what is the most probable, highest and best use and likelihood of leasing or selling
Do you ever ask for more? And are they responsive in that way, like more information or more opportunities or more solicitation?
Absolutely, absolutely. As our job, just like as a Realtor, is to try to obtain the highest and best use and value for the property, for a property for our clients. And in this case, it would be for, we are looking after the best interest of the dispossessed owners.
Ms. Camacho?
Yeah. I believe that we take this position pretty serious. We're not reckless with the funds that sit with the trust. I'm cautious. I don't pretend to be a developer. And I, just because we're allowed to develop, I would not pretend to be the developer to take property and build something. I want to, I think our training is that we work with the professionals, right, in those areas. So I think that that's what Luisa and I bring to the commission. It's really, I really like the dynamics of the board today. We have people in different, although we're all dispossessed or family members, we all come from a different background and we complement each other. We don't always agree, but I think in the end, we've been able to come up with decisions that are cautious and beneficial to those dispossessed families.
Thank you, Angie. I like what she said, she did. And she, what she said is very true. We are cautious, probably to some point. I'm a little too methodical and slow in my digesting of information and coming to a decision, but she, as she says, we do complement each other. We do. We come to the table with a team of people with lots of experience. And as she says, we've had some heated, debated discussions between ourselves because we don't all agree on matters. But in the end, you know, in the end, we all are looking at how our principles are going to benefit from our decisions and that we endeavor to make the best decision for them. Sometimes it takes time. Government processes, I've learned, it takes time. I've been, all of my career in the private industry, and so things move at a different pace, but I understand the reason and the need when we're dealing with and looking after the public interest, that things just cannot be hastily done and that all things need to be considered.
Thank you. So the property, some of the property that's being leased, the revenues are going into the bank, land bank, and trust fund. This trust is supposed to be for the benefit of the beneficiaries. To my knowledge, no distributions have been made yet, but the revenues continue to grow, and they have been recently invested differently than before. Could you, are you confident that those investments are prudent, I guess?
So we rely on GIDA to help us come to the best decision in the use of those funds in as far as investment. I think we've done better than in the past where it was locked into CDs, although we are new to this and we wanted to be cautious and decided to continue with CDs with higher interest. So, you know, it's not our money. I'm very mindful of that. And at the same time, we've got to grow it, right? We've got quite a ways to grow this money so that it can compensate those who should be.
All right, thank you. Ms. Westling, anything to add?
Just to add, as what Angela said, that we did recently, I think it was just last year, with the formation of the Investment Committee, of which Ms. Camacho is a part of, look to increase the, our financial gains because we were, as she said, just placed the monies in safe certificate of deposit accounts that were really yielding very low returns. Because as you recall, it wasn't just a year ago that, you know, mortgage rates were only 2% and 3%, so therefore CDs were generating much lower. And so we, the idea of diversifying the money and the funds, the trust funds, and to, for higher yields was given to us. And we listened to several financial companies with advice and what could be done and what the record of returns were. And with much discussion and time, we opted to go away from certificate of deposits with the banks and go into something a little more high-yielding, but with still extreme caution. And so far, it has, the Land Bank Trust has benefited, and we have been able to realize a higher return than previous.
All right, and the investment companies versus GIDA, who played what role? Was it open for every investment company to come and make proposals or was it GIDA's recommendations?
So we entered into an MOU with GIDA. GIDA did their RFP to financial institutions or investment companies. And they do have an agreement with two companies that we are able to access through the MOU.
Okay, all right. And then, so there are properties that you are leasing or potentially leasing. We have collections issues. There are audit issues regarding collections, I think. Yes, bad debt. And do you believe that your being on the board is helping GLC to either collect this debt or to ensure that this does not happen again?
I do believe that we can contribute to future ways of, you know, entering into lease agreements, how defaults will be handled, and which I believe will help to mitigate and hopefully minimize the opportunities for default and if so, increase the likelihood of collections. And, you know, this will be by my follow-up, staying in close contact with tenants and knowing every month, you know, who is a current, who is not, and knowing when to, when notices have to be issued. And as Senator Brown mentioned earlier about hazardous materials, you know, when storage and making sure that properties are not allowed to go on for long periods of time. All of these things take time to implement, but I believe that as a member of the commission, we can bring about change and help to ensure that we don't run into problems in the future that we have in the past.
I'm very concerned about that because, for example, sometimes the boards are led by like the directors, whatever their agendas are, that's what we're going to take care of, as opposed to always taking care of things that you need to take care of, right? We should be regular, particularly when you have leases out and management of those, collection. And in your case, ancestral lands has also done an MOU. And in your case, ancestral lands has also done an MOU with GIDA. And so a lot of, in the past, the responses I've received are, well, that's what GIDA, that's GIDA's job or GIDA's, you know, recommendation. But really, we would have gone through GIDA with all these properties if that's what we wanted. We wanted ancestral landowners who had very much passion to ensure that the other landowners are going to get best value. So, yeah, I, I, that's one of the issues I have is just this reliance on GIDA without your own involvement, your own judgment and all of that. Ms. Camacho?
So, so it, it just, probably in the last year, I would say, GIDA has broken down for us, tenants, and then delinquencies and status on payments. So that helps us know what is happening. We've called them on it several times, you know, that more action needs to be taken. We've looked at renewals on leases and, and asked, can we review the lease so that we can know what the terms are? And, and it, we found that, you know, there was a clause for an appraisal, two appraisals as a matter of fact, which did help Guam ancestral lands gain a little bit extra than what was on the table. So I, I need to say that Luisa has been very instrumental in doing research and bringing to our awareness a lot of these things that we should take a look at and consider. And, and it's happening, at least working with Luisa, I see that it's been happening in the last few years.
Appreciate that. I am, I, I want the commissioners to be independent, to, to inform themselves independently if necessary, because I think that's necessary, that you, you listen, of course, to your consultants, but we have records that we can see where we have not collected. We've got bad debt being cited by audits. So there, you need to go a little bit beyond that. And I appreciate you bringing in your own efforts of research. And I see a lot of commissioners or board members in not just this, what others, where they're very shy to question the directors and they just, the directors come in and fit their agendas and lead these into matters like, oh, we have a proposal now by this company, let's talk about that. It really should be led by the commissioners and you should take care of the business that you need to take care of. Entertaining other proposals really should be at your convenience and your priorities, in accordance with your priorities, as opposed to taking over your priority list, right? All right. And so with that, I'm going to go into like, like the Northern Market settlement, right? So this is, I know it was a board vote, so that's not just on the two of you individually. However, if I understand this correctly, they were in arrears and now you have entered into a settlement agreement that you believe is in the best interest of the beneficiaries and that will garner more value, I guess, than what would have happened if you had just terminated the lease for default and tried to lease it out again? Is that correct?
Speaker, that happened after our term expired. The board deciding on some renegotiation. But I, my only understanding is that they were looking at December to, I guess, yeah, they put conditions and so there is a opportunity come December if things aren't, and my understanding is it's still under negotiation. I don't think that there's an agreement on the percentage of participation rent.
Ms. Blask, could you clarify that? I thought there was a vote already.
Yes, ma'am. There was a vote and it was agreed. I believe what it is, is the negotiation is that Northern Market has up until December to break ground. Commissioner Lino was in that meeting, break ground. And their net, I believe the net profit was 50% to the commission versus what was previously...
So there's an agreement and that's, that includes action by December on certain things?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Will the, will the commissioners, well, I guess that's already automatic. It's either you follow the lease or you, or your agreement or you don't at that point?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
So they have up until December of this year to break ground, otherwise everything is null and voided.
All right. Okay. Now I'm going to talk a little bit more on the philosophical side. This is really what are the principles, right? That we're going to govern this, these ancestral lands by. So we have crown lands in your inventory. That's where we're supposed to be receiving the benefit for the beneficiaries. Some of them are leased, not all, not by any means are all of these leased, not even close, in fact. For example, when the Eda Agaga property came up for use for the hospital or to, for sale to the government of Guam for use as a hospital, that property had not been proposed for investment prior to that, from what I could tell. So there may be other properties as well, right? That are in your inventory that, that nothing's happening with. What is your philosophy on that? These crown lands that are sitting vacant?
Well, it is the desire of the commission to, to, to activate and get the properties that we have working to benefit the, our principals. We have in, in recent years, RFP'd several properties to include Upang Gigo and the Polaris Point, right? Properties there too. And there have been a couple more that we've been looking at. Unfortunately, not a lot of response or interest from the general public came forward. And those that did, we had them come before the commission and to present their proposals, but we found that their proposals, at least for one of the properties, just, there was just not a lot of confidence as to what they were proposing and what they could do. And to the commission, it felt like that really it was the commission that was giving most of the considerations. So I believe we did RFP it again, the property, after so many months, but there was no, no response.
So do you believe the commission is controlling which properties get RFP'd out and that they're making priorities as to which ones should be tried, you know, next?
I recall, I recall maybe over a year ago, for some reason, there were commission members that presented to the board a stay on RFPs. I'm not under, I'm not, I don't understand that. I don't understand putting a stay if there's, especially if there were interest, but that's something that I'm vocal about. Removing that stay of it hasn't already been done. But I, I do believe in the process as well and, and I think that that's a big thing for me is, is GIDA, who issues the RFP, follows processes as well, right?
Right. But who sets the priority as to which property should be RFP? Is that just based on GIDA's recommendation they decide?
I think it's also based on interest, right? Public interest if unsolicited offers, yeah? Sometimes that's what, then we know that, that there's an interest in that location. But I, I do think we can get a little bit more aggressive on leasing crown properties, especially if, as we see the high demand on property.
I think the more you lease out your crown properties, the less like desperate we're going to seem for when there's one offer, you know, for cash or one offer for settlement or one offer for sale, then, you know, that lessens the pressure on, on the trust to deliver, right? That you've got consistent sources of revenue. That's what I would like to see. I am concerned about the proposal to, that the, according to the director at the time, that the ancestral lands commission condoned the sale of parts of these properties in, in the crown lands inventory. Is that, as a commissioner, or do you condone the sale of these properties?
So if I remember correctly, it was to sell or to lease.
Which allowed sale?
The Manilau property.
Yes. So as a commissioner, do you condone the sale of the crown lands inventory?
Personally, I think that if there's an interest, if it's going to generate revenue, I think that that's our job, is to entertain all leases, all offers, all proposals for sale. For me, the important thing is that if a lease is executed or a sale, that we're looking at fair market value.
Ms. Wesley?
I echo that same sentiment. And I did several years ago when the Guam power authority came before the board with the request to purchase land out in the Two Levers Point area for the construction of the power plant. I did vote in favor of that because I saw that it would benefit the people of Guam plus their, their plans and how they would, which I thought was pretty cool, use the wastewater from the sewer plant there for, for cooling of, of the, the generators. And the fact that it was way back off the beaten track, I thought that it was a good opportunity and would, it would have generated funds for the land bank. So I did vote in favor of that sale because I thought it was a good thing, but the, the board at the time was not in favor of selling and they opted to lease instead. And I understand that. I understand the reason why some of our commission members would rather see leasing than selling because once, when you lease, you still, in a sense, you still own it. You do. Once you sell, it's gone forever. And so I understand that, that sentiment. But sometimes I think, not sometimes, but always, we look at, at least I do, as to how a sale, a lease or exchange is going to benefit, more importantly, our mission.
Right. I guess that's what I, I need, we need to clarify for me. I want to know, how are we going to achieve this mission, right? Are we going to lease our lands for long-term leases, receive revenue, take that revenue and invest it and take that, the revenues generated by that and give that to our beneficiaries? Or are we going to, because we could have, the legislature could have years ago said, sell all the property, get that cash and let's just divvy it out right now. We could have done that. They didn't do that. And I'm sure these property owners are getting more, you know, concerned and for immediate relief. And I also am concerned about that. So, you know, it's a different time now. Now we're decades later and they have not been compensated. And that's, that's the issue, I guess, that we have to really deal with. But I, it seems to me very contrary to the original intent to sell the property, right? Because they could have done that. They did not do that. And it, it's a loss of property for landowners and loss of property for Guam as well, right? I think it's, it's kind of for me, there is still very much of concern. We just heard of the AT&amp;T lease. We own that little building and their ancestral lands owns the building, but it's not, doesn't own the access to it or the cable easements that are running towards it that make it valuable. And the valuable parts of that, according to some testimony earlier today, were returned to ancestral landowners and sold, which is their right to do. But right now, no one, no part of the government of Guam or, or, I don't know, yeah, the ownership of that is, and that's concerning to me because we're talking about cables, right? And this is a whole, it's a security issue. It's a investment, Guam investment issue as well. And, and really our, that whole technology, you know, issue is whether we are going to use our lands and property to be connected and to take advantage of that. Or, yeah, are we going to be left out of the deal and just get the crumbs from those kinds of investments? But, all right. So these are some of my concerns. Are we aware of the, there was supposed to be an appraisal when they were considering the lease of the Eda Agaga property. Was there ever an appraisal completed? Do you have the appraisal amount?
I do not have the appraisal, but the amount that was reserved for the appraisal was $25,000.
That's for the costs?
The cost of the appraisal. But we have not seen the appraisal report. It has not been submitted to our office.
Can you follow it, whether that was?
Completed?
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And paid for? So the other thing is, there's this argument about return of excess lands. So the lands that you get, you've tried to return. There is still a list of lands not returned yet because you cannot contact these landowners. We've talked about this in previous hearings, so I'm not going to talk about that right now. I need to hear from you landowners, I mean, you commissioners, that you are going to push for contact of those landowners, that you, you cannot let that go, that cannot be somebody else's job. It's your job. You have to do that. The other one is, you know, the director has come in here in previous, in several occasions and said, we are not going, there's no more land that will be returned because of this law that we have in place. And so this US law that says, you know, it can no longer be returned to ancestral landowners has to be stayed with the government of Guam. But honestly, I feel like if that is not your job to advocate for the return of the lands to the ancestral landowners, we would have never got to where we are today. So some of you have seen your properties returned, but a lot of these people have not and they are counting on you. We have created a government commission and put our resources behind it. And I would like to see advocacy for the return of those properties and not this attitude of, well, the US is not going to allow it. They were never going to allow it unless we pushed for it. So I am asking you to do that for the rest of the property owners who have not seen their return. And I know that a lot of the commissioners have seen return of some of their properties, not all, but, so I just say, you know, we can't, we've got to continue to do that. I, I would like to see that. I, I don't want to say, oh, there's a legal opinion that we can't. That is not how we got to where we are today. That's not how your lands were returned. There were, there were people pushing for that even prior to us. So I guess, how do you feel about that?
I support you in that. And I hope, and we will work. I know Angela and myself, along with the commission members, will work towards that, that end, because we too want to see as many properties returned to the rightful owners.
All right. So to be more specific, there is a process in place where the governor makes a request in writing, this goes through GIDA, makes a list of land that maybe should be returned. They, they request return. The governor formally requests to the Secretary of the Navy for return of those properties that look like excess to us, right? And then the Secretary of the Navy responds and says, yes, that looks like excess to us too. We will return that eventually, or we will return that subject to keeping the easements that we need, or we will never return that. We have a use for that. They, they give us an answer. So those are available. And I, there are some, for example, Eda Agaga, that's... And I, there are some, for example, Eda Agaga that said will be returned, right? But, so I just want the commissioners to be very up to date on that. There is land that has been returned, for example, USO and other properties. And I know that previous testimony has been that, well, they never come to the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission yet, but I think you should know the status of all returned lands and why is it not coming to the Ancestral Lands Commission? Because no one's going to advocate that it does unless you do, right? And otherwise, these things are done between land management and the governor, and then it's over. But I don't know, you know, so the government is deciding to keep it, but I just feel like somebody should be informing those landowners that that was returned by the federal government and the government of Guam is deciding to keep it, because then they become your additional beneficiaries. Isn't that right? And those landowners. So we need to deal with that. And you should just be aware that your beneficiaries list is growing as opposed to, yeah, seeing their land. All right. I'm going to now offer to my vice chair, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and also to our two nominees that are here for the reappointment. I appreciate you elaborating to the questions and inquiry that our speaker has had. But obviously, this political issue has raised its head with regards to the administration essentially coming out and telling us that they're looking at acquiring this property up the back road to Anderson, Eda Agaga, from the Ancestral Lands Commission. How are you going to vote on that issue? Because obviously, we originally passed a bill earlier this year that a majority of us would like to see the hospital located back into money at the original hospital site. We did not have enough votes at the time to override the governor's veto on that bill. But we also see that the administration is putting in place their own agenda to obtain land and work around the legislature to essentially put the hospital where the governor wants the hospital. And obviously, that's impacting property that they've identified fall under the commission. And so we'd like to know, how are you going to respond to that? What's your vote going to be?
I think as far as the Eda Agaga, we've taken action on what we could, which was to authorize the sale or the lease. I think that anything beyond five years, correct, it comes to the legislature for your approval. So again, I respect processes, and we just have to go by what the decision is between the legislature and the, and the administration.
Has this property been opened up to anyone else? Has this property been added to a list where anyone and everyone that has an interest in leasing property from ancestral lands or acquiring property if you were to sell it? Is there a means under which that is advertised, or is that something only select parties that have awareness of it can access?
For some reason, we have board members who, who wanted a stay on RFPs and something that I didn't agree with. I, I don't think we should be holding back on leasing or any opportunities to generate revenue. I think that's the biggest thing on my mind is, we have a big task. I'm not sure that, how, how do you compensate the families who own the Tzen property, who will never, with, with, we have about 15, $16 million in the account, that's not sufficient. I think we need to, to issue RFPs. I'm very vocal about that during our meetings.
Well, because I think, yeah, and I think there should be a standard means. It's not, because now the governor decides she wants to take this property, that she gets to take it, and that, that property, if it was not identified to be leased or, or on a list that anyone who has an interest in investing can do so, so that you could get the best opportunity and hopefully the best price for this property, which obviously should be the objective. Because I'm a little concerned about the politicizing of this process, because that's exactly what it is. The administration is deciding that, you know, that's why we do have three branches of government, is, is to have that check and balance. And that's what's concerning here, because the governor's using federal, I assume is going to be using these federal funds that she has put aside to sidestep what otherwise, under normal circumstances, would be the authority of the legislature to appropriate. So you have that check and balance. And I would very much hate to see that process move forward without consensus, because down the road, it's going to end up being a problem unless the administration has the ability to pay for this entire facility and pay for all the infrastructure that's going to go into it. You know, this administration or the next is going to be knocking on the door of the legislature, saying, "We need additional funds to do this. We need additional funds to operate. We need additional funds to maintain it." And, you know, who knows with the legislature? What if the legislature says, "No"? So that, that is concerning, because I, I see the Ancestral Lands Commission at this point being used as a vehicle to facilitate the agenda of the administration to work around the process of public consensus to obtain this property. Obviously, they made it very clear for their intention to build that facility there. And like I said, unless the governor has a check to pay for it all and can do it in the next two and a half years, because the clock is ticking and it's running out, I don't know that that's the best interest of the overall community in facilitating the construction of a new hospital. So I'm just being straightforward with it. I don't think we can dance around the reality of that issue, because it's something that doesn't just affect the governor or the legislature, it affects our community and the future of where we're investing our resources.
Senator, and to your point, I think that it's the public that suffers here without a new hospital. I think that we need to figure it out. I think that the location of the, wherever, we just need a new hospital. I would support, I, I would support, but, but then again, we never had the conversation. The ownership on Ipau Point, and they have a mission as well. So it's, it's complicated.
So how would you, in terms of, right now, you're saying this property has already been put up for either lease or sale by the commission? Have you voted on that?
No. I think we only voted on?
On the Eda Agaga property?
There's, we couldn't do anything without legislative approval. We don't.
On that?
A lease longer than five years? I don't.
There was a resolution supporting the lease or sale. Yeah. And they still have within their authority the lease or sell within five, under five years? Correct.
So, okay, but how would they sell it? I mean, if you sell it, it's, it's gone forever. Do they have the, does the ancestral lands have the ability to sell the property? Because I assume the intent was to purchase it, at least as those were the public positions that were made.
Yeah.
Do you have the authority to sell the property?
We do. Yes. It does enable us to sell, lease, exchange, develop the Crown Land properties.
Well, currently, you would not have been involved, I assume, in that decision over the last year, right? Since your appointments expired? So you've not, you, the two of you specifically, did you, were you there to vote on a resolution for it then? Did you vote on it prior to your term expiring?
Yes, we were still there. And again, the commissioners added the, the condition also, or the option to lease, because initially, it was a resolution to sell, and we said, "Well, we would like that included in this resolution," and that was the decision. We, we did vote. I did vote.
And so how's the determination made? Who do you sell to? Because then what is the public process under which anyone who would have an interest in this or any other property know that it's available versus the administration deciding, "Oh, we want to buy," and the ancestral lands says, "Yes, oh, we'll sell it to you." Why would you sell it to, to the administration versus anybody else out there? And how is anyone else informed that this property or any other property that you've authorized to be sold is available?
At the time of the meeting, I believe, when the commissioners agreed to this, with the resolution to sell or lease that property, it was open. The RFP process was open.
Okay.
Because, like Commissioner Camacho was stating, that several years ago, there was a stay on all of our RFPs. And then the request came to the commission to sell, right? To sell Eda Agaga or to le, it was sale. The original, the original request was sale.
Where did the request come from? Who requested it?
It was, I'm not privy to that. Yeah. At the time, I was not the director, so I'm going to assume, which I shouldn't, but the request was made from the executive director to the board. Request, the request was whether, that there was an interest to buy.
And what exec, and who's that executive director?
That would be Mr. Birch.
So he made that, but you don't know where that came from? I mean, I'm just saying, with regards to public resources, I mean, we look at procurement, that there should be a process.
Yes, yes.
And, and it isn't just, you know, if, if I'm just knowing that I have inside information that, that, that land's available, or I, you know, was involved in the process of how executive directors or directors get put in their position to come and advocate that, "Oh, we should put this property available." That really isn't how it should be on government assets. And even though it is under ancestral lands, those are still assets that are owned by other vested interests other than ourselves. So there should be some public process under which that occurs, so we don't have what we're seeing. Because this, to me, is a very politicized process. This almost taints this procurement of this land, because the governor is intending to go around the normal procurement of land for the government, because it's, it's very unusual when the government does buy land. But in this particular case, to take what was originally intended was to benefit the, those families that were dispossessed as a result of the federal land takings, and use this as a mechanism to, to essentially decide where she wants the hospital, irrelevant of whether or not the legislature will even fund it. Because I'm very, if I'm still in the legislature, I'd have concern about funding something that I don't feel was a public process. And the administration, the clock is running out. I mean, that's the reality. We have two and a half years of what's left of this direction and this leadership. I mean, the legislature can change in a few months also. I mean, there would be very different members sitting here making decisions, but that, to me, is not how the process should be. And I would like to know, I know your executive director is not here, but I certainly, I think it would be very, we'd like to know how and where that determination was made with this specific lot. Because I wouldn't want to see this with any other lot of how ancestral lands is addressing either the lease or sale. That should be a public process. We should say, "We have X amount of properties on our inventory. It's advertised from this period of time to this period of time. Any interested parties, this is a process you have to go through if you're interested in leasing or purchasing this land," so that it's a very public process, and it's not just left to anybody who has a special interest or special influence. And let's not kid ourselves, the governor of Guam at any given time has influence. As, you know, us, we have to collectively agree. But in that particular case, you can have one individual making those type of decisions on behalf of the people. And that's just not how it should be with regards to the assets and ensuring that there's, there's fairness and there's transparency in how these lands are being either leased or how they're being sold. I mean, at least for lease agreements, they have to come through a public process when they come to the Guam Legislature. We just can't, you know, do it under the table and say, "Here's the deal." And, and that shouldn't be any different with regards to tomorrow's land trust property being leased, or in your case, you know, ancestral lands property being leased or sold. So I'm just bringing that up, because obviously, and it's just the timing. You just happened to be in place for confirmation at the time that this issue's still on the table, but I appreciate your response. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Barnett?
Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker, and thank you for showing up this morning and answering a lot of the questions. I like somewhat of them, I'm hearing, but I think just generally, for me, I'm generally against the sale of the property. I think leasing is just a, a better option in terms of keeping it in the inventory. But I did have a couple of questions, and I know that you're both up for reappointments, so I wasn't here for your initial appointment, but, and these are standard questions that I ask of every appointee that comes through relative to conflicts of interest. And so I see that you're both practicing realtors, and I guess I would just ask first, do you believe that it's a conflict interest for you to be realtors and serve on the Ancestral Lands Commission? Or?
Personally, I've never seen a conflict for myself. I've never been involved in any sale of Guam ancestral properties. As a matter of fact, as I mentioned in my testimony, that I have not had time to even practice real estate, so that's been in the back burner. I think that if anything, it's benefited the commission in terms of being able to review lease and what are the conditions of the lease and understanding certain things about appraisals and surveys and things that, that we do as realtors. So, and, and if ever the time comes, which I just don't see, we would recuse ourselves from voting on anything that I could potentially, potentially benefit from personally.
Ma'am?
I agree with everything that Ms. Camacho says. To date, I don't believe there has been any conflict, and as she said, if there was anything that even smelled or, or looked like a possible conflict, we would certainly recuse ourselves from that situation. And thankfully, an, an occasion like that has never arisen. I think our experience, as Angie stated, does bring to the table ability to understand the leasing and, and the intricacies and the legalities and, and the contracts of, of, of selling and leasing properties and what factors need to be considered, where we can be in a position to at least advise and make recommendations to our board members and whether or not they agree with what we say, we can at least bring sound advice and education to them and helping to make a decision as a board.
Thank you for those answers, and I do see where your experience in real estate could be beneficial to your service. But, and again, I guess just for the record, have you ever been involved with the sale of any lands that were returned to original landowners?
No, I haven't.
And neither have I. And I'd, I would like to add, for the, for the, for the properties in which I was a board member and was able to attend the, I was going to say contract signing, but I know that's not what it's called.
Deed signing.
Deed signing. Given the opportunity, you know, I, I'd like to talk with the, with the recipients that, that, of, of the lands to, you know, everybody has a, a different need and want as a result of getting these properties. But I do like to share with them to be very careful in deciding in what you, what you want to do with this property. Your families have waited for years to get this back, and so try, as a family, as, as much as you can, to, to come to a joint decision that's going to benefit the whole family. And I realize that's real different, you know, difficult. Even as a realtor, I don't advocate, "Sell, sell, sell," you know, but in some situations, I mean, that is going to be the best thing, you know, for a family. But I do try to advocate for them and tell them, "You've waited so long, you've fought so long to get the properties back, and if there's any way that you can keep it in your family, keep it," you know, "And don't just let it go so, so quickly." But each will do what they need to do to best serve, but that's kind of like how I look at land.
Did you have anything to add, ma'am?
We're local girls, you know? We're, we're, we want to protect our people and, and make sure that if they need to, if they decide to sell property, that it is, you know, they, they know, I guess we would advise them, right? Speak to your tax preparer, you know, speak to whoever it may be, right? So that, so that once land is sold, it's sold. Once, once the money's gone, it's gone. And, and it, it, our people are hurting, right? We need to find ways to house people. That's my, that's my passion. So I guess it helps that we're local girls and not just trying to make a buck off of any opportunity.
Thank you for that. And, yeah, because I'd spoken with some constituents ahead of the hearing, and they had raised the concern to me that, "Oh, is it a conflict for realtors to sit on the commission?" And I kind of asked, "Well, why would it be?" And that was what we discussed, was the potential for if I'm an ancestral landowner, have my land taken, I get it back. And then, "Oh, it's convenient. I'm on the commission. Hey, you want to sell? I get a percentage." And so that's where the conflict would arise. But you're saying that... But you're saying that when these deeds are signed, you advise these people or counsel them on their options, just as commissioners or as Realtors?
Both, I think. And as Angie said, local girls, you know? Land is precious. On... Land is precious. It's God-created, and we are tasked to manage it. And on an island as small as Guam, where the rule of thumb before was one-third is private, one-third government of Guam, and one-third federal, there's not a lot. And so what we do have, guard it and protect it. And if you can, I've always advocated, keep it, develop it, nurture it, let it be passed on just as our ancestors passed on to us.
Senator, Luisa and I have been on the commission for a few years now. And again, I've never taken advantage of this position to approach any landowner or families who are getting returned lands. I've never approached anybody to take advantage of this position, nor will I.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you believe it would be a conflict if you were to maybe tip off another Realtor about land that was returned to somebody and say, "Hey, this party is interested in selling" or... Sorry, I'm just trying to cover all the bases.
Just not how I roll, you know? That's not my style.
Same here.
I suppose that there are people, Realtors, that would do that, but not my style.
Thank you.
Same here.
Okay. Thank you. And then I guess for Mrs. Camacho, you are currently employed with the Guam Housing Corporation?
That's correct.
What is your position?
Manager. So I run the rental division at Guam Housing.
Is that a classified or unclassified position?
Unclassified.
Unclassified. And so I guess, consistent with just the types of questions that I like to ask of the different nominees, do you believe that being an unclassified... Is this an appointed position or did you apply for it?
Appointed.
Okay. So being an appointed unclassified hire, do you believe that you have the ability to be impartial in making decisions on the commission as a member?
Absolutely. I've never been in a position to use either position to influence either agency or whatnot. But as I did mention in my testimony, that Guam Housing has been very supportive in me participating in board meetings, committee meetings, and any important event that is with the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
I guess, I know Speaker had asked some philosophical questions, but I think this is one as well. So there are instances where we receive the land back, it's deemed excess, and then there becomes a... You know, sometimes there's a situation where you have to make a determination about whether it's going to stay with the government of Guam or go back to the original landowner. So in instances where there's that choice, I guess, for lack of a better word, where would you generally... Which side of that would you generally come down on? And what factors would you use to make that decision? I'm just thinking, because I know, for example, USO, right, is one of the properties that was deemed excess. And I know that, I'm not sure if it's the government's trying to keep it or go back to others.
I don't think that went back to... I don't think that went back to heirs or...
Any property then?
Yeah.
Generally?
I believe in processes. And again, Crown Land will remain with the government of Guam. I believe in following the law as well. I do know on 106, the current congressman was going to do something about that bill, which, you know, I would monitor and watch and see how Congress decides on that. Do I want to see dispossessed landowners receive their land? Absolutely.
As Angie has mentioned, I too very much respect the process, that processes that have been placed in motion for us to follow and for returned properties. If they, I understand the process is to the government of Guam. And then if the government of Guam doesn't decide to use it, it goes to Guam Ancestral Lands. And then our duty then is to get it to the ancestral owners. But if the government of Guam determines that it was in the best interest of the public to keep the property under the government of Guam, then, you know, we have to respect that process. And only until it is returned to us, then of course, we do as much as we can and as quickly as we can to get it back out to the owners.
Is there an instance where you think that you would be obligated or required to question a determination from the government of Guam to keep a property instead of passing it back to the original landowners? Or would you just accept?
Yes. No, there is. There is times when you need to question. And I think Edagaga was a classic case that it was returned. And then, memory serves me right, as my father tells me, Guam Community College stepped in at the time that it was initially released by the federal government. And they claimed it because as a government entity for education purposes, you know, it could go to them first. And I think GCC held that area for decades and did absolutely nothing, you know, with it. And so that should have been returned, you know, a long time ago, back to the original landowners. And thankfully, through the, I think it was the efforts of Senator Ben Pangolinen, that it was finally, you know, done. But yes, in those instances, you know, I would absolutely question the government's right to or the need to hold on to it.
Thank you, yeah. And we definitely... And I'm just thinking, several years ago, I had obtained a document from, I don't know if it was one of the secretaries of the Navy, that basically had deemed a list of, you know, different parcels to include some parcels at Eagles Field. And I think at the time, we saw this document, it was deemed eligible for return to the government of Guam. But then the... There had been a determination by the administration, I believe, to use it for complex. And then that conversation never started. And I'd only at the time, and we'd been criticized in here for trying to give original landowners false hope relative to the possibility of this return of this land. And the whole time, I'd always said, at that point where it was deemed eligible, if governor, lieutenant-governor had championed the return of that land to the original landowners instead of saying, "Oh, we want to build, you know, something else here." I think that's where we kind of depart. So yeah, I appreciate that answer, that you would be... Use critical thinking to question those types of decisions. And thank you for answering the questions as well, ma'am. Nothing further, Madam Speaker. Sido Smasi.
Sido Smasi. Senator Barnett. Senator Taitegui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will make this short. I know everyone has been here quite some time. And all the questions that were asked were basically questions that are hard questions. And you answered them very well, putting your heart and soul into what you're doing. And most especially, keeping your ethics in place is so important. And, you know, I mean, we're going to continue to watch the Ancestral Lands, especially because to us, it has been... Become very political, in a sense. You're in the hot seat. But I have to tell you, even though you... And I'm pretty sure you know you're in the hot seat, that you still want to continue to be in this position. And I hope that's because you truly believe in helping our ancestors, our people of Guam, and returning their lands. I've known you both personally for many, many years. And I've always known you as good people. So I appreciate your honesty today. I do want... I have one other question that wasn't asked. The property that's surrounding the area in which the potential hospital, the surrounding area, are you aware of who owns these properties?
Yes, ma'am. Some majority of the land surrounding that are private landowners.
And do you know who those private landowners are?
If Joey Leonguero was here, he would probably give you a list, unfortunately. I don't know. Oh, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so then my... To simplify it so that we don't linger on, are these landowners that are surrounding this area of the potential hospital where the governor wants the hospital at? And by the way, I know, it's like, just put up a hospital, what you said earlier, Angie. I agree. Let's put up a hospital. But this body, as a majority, voted to have it into Mooning. I mean, they gave it to us to deal with, and we did deal with it. And the majority said to Mooning. So we are doing what we're supposed to do. But then again, back to the same question, these owners that are surrounding that area in Minilau, were those names given to anybody on the board? Did any of those lists of names come to any of you?
No. No, ma'am.
So you don't know who owns these properties that are surrounding that area?
Correct.
Well, you just said you do know who they are, but it wasn't given to the board. That's what I want to know.
Oh, we would know who they are based on research.
Okay.
But do we know them personally? No, ma'am.
I think some of them, if I'm not mistaken, Joey, were returned lands that surround Edagaga. So did...
Come on up, Joey. You know, it's always a pleasure. I'm trying to make this short and sweet because, you know, it is way past your lunch. And I don't want you to not like me because I didn't let you eat. Never want to stand in between lunchtime or dinner for anyone. So Joey, the list of the landowners that are surrounding that area of the potential property that Ancestral Lands would like to lease for this new hospital, has any of those names been given to any of the board members?
Okay, so this is... My name is Joey Leonguero, land agent, Ancestral Lands Commission. I have the list available, or I have a list available, but I don't think the board ever requested that information. So I'm...
You never gave it to them?
To my knowledge, we didn't give it to them, yeah.
Okay.
But we can. We can provide that information if you need. But the board, to my recollection, never requested that information. I don't think they ever... I don't think they even needed it.
Okay. Well, it's always good to find out who's approaching you to encourage you. And then you had no idea, you know? That's... You're guilty by association, you know? And you don't want to get in that predicament. So I think it would be in the best interest to know who those landowners are in case you're approached and being coerced into pushing the Ancestral Lands Board to sell that property or even to lease it. Okay? So just cover, see why, you know? Okay? Other than that, I'd like to thank you again for stepping up to the plate. And you are in that hot seat. So stay your ground. Don't turn a blind eye, but most especially, don't close your eyes. Okay? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sounds like a song, Senator. All right. Thank you, Senator Taitegui. This is... All right. With that, we are going to conclude this hearing. And for the reappointments of Angela M. Camacho to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission for a term of four years, and for the reappointment of Luisa M. Westling to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission for a term of four years. And we will accept testimony for the next five working days until August 1, 2024, by email to senatorterlahigua at gmail dot com or here to the Guam Congress Building. And this public hearing is now adjourned, and it is 12:27 PM. Sido Smasi. Tito.